Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve any council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I do have one addition for you to consider. It'd be under the recognition of gifts, donations, and community service. And we do have a resolution for a donation from the Hutchinson Huskies to be added.
Motion to approve with the addition of the resolution?
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave, to approve the agenda with the additions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Invitation is from Cross Point Church. Good evening. Travelled a long ways to be with us.
I did. I'm from North Carolina, so I came all the way up here to pray and then I'll leave and go back. Let's bow our heads. Dear God, thank you so much for this opportunity to pray before this council, Lord, and we just lift these men up to you as they lead such a beautiful city and in growing, Lord, as this city is growing. And I'm so blessed to now be a part of this community. And I thank you for the decisions that are going to be made, that they're ordained by your hand tonight, Lord, and we pray for each one of their lives personally and professionally, Lord, that your hand is involved in that, Lord. And we just thank you again for this opportunity and for this wonderful, wonderful, beautiful day of nice weather that you've blessed us with here in Hutchinson, in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Are you ready? We have a couple of resolutions underneath there. We have resolution number one, five, seven, seven, eight. Resolution accepting twenty-five thousand dollars donation from the Citizens Bank and Trust Company for the V M F Grandstand Project. And we have resolution number one, five, seven, eight, one. Resolution accepting from the Hutchinson Huskies one hundred thousand dollars for the V M F Park.
Make a motion to accept both resolutions?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat, to approve those two resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Just a point of reference, that resolution or that donation from Citizens Bank, that's, I think, one of three that are going to occur. There's actually going to be another one of twenty-five thousand that come from, I think, the Birds Foundation, but they're doing fifty thousand over the next three years in total, just for council's knowledge.
All right. Public comments. Citizens addressing the council, please come forward to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Stand here before, well, Tom Gibson, Police Chief, City of Hutchinson. I stand before you tonight to introduce our newest police officer, Brandon Litzow. He's fresh out of field training, been on his own here for a couple of weeks about now, so doing a fantastic job. So I, again, wanted to bring him here, as I traditionally do, to introduce him to you all. I'll let you ask away if you have any questions of him.
Where'd you come from? Background?
So I am from Hutch here. I graduated Hutch High School. I joined the Marine Corps right out of high school, did four years active duty there, and then went to college at Minnesota State University of Mankato, where I got my bachelor's. Then I came right back to Hutch.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you for your service to the Marine Corps and welcome to Hutchinson and for being back in town.
Yeah.
Safe.
Thank you.
I don't know if Tom feel the end, but I have a black.
Welcome.
Thank you.
That's welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
By Chad, second by Pat, to approve those minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Resolution number one, five, seven, seven, six. Resolution for traffic control device. B is resolution number one, five, seven, seven, seven. Resolution appointing the election judges for general election. C is resolution number one, five, seven, seven, nine. Resolution setting interest rate for the two thousand twenty-four adopted assessment rules. D is approval of the federal grant policy for the city of Hutchinson. E is approval of tattoo license Kathleen Washington located at two-two-five Main Street South. F is approval of massage relations to Ping Ling Sunflower Therapy Massage located at twenty-four Main Street South. G is approval of library carpet replacement. H is approval of Hutchinson Health Foundation Rockin' Around the Christmas Tree Event on December fifth, two thousand twenty-four in Library Square. I is claims appropriations and contract payments, register A. Anything anybody want to pull off? I would like G pulled off just for a little bit of talk here.
I'll make a motion to accept the balance?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve the balance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. J J, I know that was brought up, Tim, a couple of weeks ago. You were talking about a water problem, and I just wanted to bring it to the public attention that that has been taken care of. J J?
Yep, yep. We had a couple intrusion events with the heavy rain we had this summer. We identified the location. There was, there is a membrane around the landscaping that has kind of failed in that one particular spot, so we got that identified and we'll get that taken care of prior to, starting with this carpet replacement and hopefully before it rains next, whatever that may be. But yeah, we got her identified and getting taken care of.
I just wanted to make sure that, because I had public ask about it and they, I said, I'm sure it's getting taken care of. So thank you much, A J. J J. A J, that's my son.
He's probably been called worse.
Yeah.
Never knew.
Make a motion to approve G. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve G. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Claims appropriation, contract payments, register B. I have a check on there and so does my son, so I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Motion to approve, consent agenda two?
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave, to approve register B with me abstaining. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will skip down all the way to new business. Library Square Fountain Repair. Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Included in your packet this evening was a memo and a couple of quotes with the direction we would like to go with the Library Square Fountain. So back in May, at the end of May this year, an incident occurred and some vandalism took our Library Square Fountain out of commission completely. And we took the summer to obtain some quotes and explore some options for the future of the Library Square Fountain. We vetted it through staff and also the P R C Advisory Board. One of the options that we looked at was to do a plaza style splash pad and then also just restore it back to its current state, but make sure that it's safe and operable and making sure that the correct mechanisms were in place for the pump to work appropriately. And then also make some changes to the mechanisms in order for it to be safe and eliminate, if we can, eliminate a need in the future to fix it due to some vandalism again. So we looked at those two options. It was decided that we would like to resume with the current state of the fountain, but also knowing that we need to do it correctly. We obtained quotes that were included in your packet for the repair costs. What we need to do is build a brand new pump for the system. This pump will be stored in a pump house that won't be actually on the actual fountain itself. It'll be stored in a location near the current flag pole that is closer to the street. So the cost of that is included in the quotes, the door for the pump house, and then the actual pump itself. Currently, right now, the pump takes about thirty to sixty days to be built. Once we obtain the pump, the rest of it falls into place. We've got to build the pump house around the pump and then run the electrical and all those things after the pump is installed. So we're looking at potentially a spring project. We obviously would like to get the pump made this, this fall yet in order to kind of get the ball rolling. So again, included in the packet were quotes from three different vendors and then some miscellaneous pump supplies, landscaping, and things like that, that the Parks Department would need to get it back up running and restored to its original structure, but also a lot safer. So included in this also would be eliminating any sort of part of the pump in the fountain itself, which will take away if someone would jump into the fountain. It would help that us so that we wouldn't have damage to the fountain again. The old pump was all stored inside the fountain. This one will be outside of the fountain, making it a lot more safe. It's not going to completely eliminate any vandalism that could occur. The fountain heads will be flat and with the fountain itself, so there could be minimal damage if someone would go swimming or jump in there or do something, but the pump or the actual heads of the fountain could be replaced easily and a lot cheaper for us. So tonight, I am asking that the council approve using community improvement dollars to not exceed sixty thousand dollars for this repair. We have been working with multiple vendors to obtain second quotes and for the electrical work and then also for the pump house itself. But for the pump, it's a pretty specialized thing and it might be a little bit tricky to get a second quote for that part of the project. But when it's all said and done, it should be around sixty thousand dollars. And we'd like to use community improvement dollars to make sure we can restore this big part of Library Square and our community. So any questions?
Lynn, was this probably what, the third or fourth time in the last five or six years that we've had vandalism?
Yes. Yep. So since I've been here, and so three and a half years, we've had multiple incidences where we've had to restore it at least three times. And we were able to still do that because they didn't mess with the integrity of the system itself. This time, they completely messed with the integrity of our pump system and we had an electrician come look at it and deemed that it was not fixable at that time. So, you know, we would like to do some educating of the public after the fountain is restored, making sure that people stay out of it. We always post signs, no, you know, drinking, waiting, bathing, jumping into the fountain. We'll continue to do so and then obviously educate the public on the importance of staying out of there. This system will now have, it'll be a chlorine and U V filtered system, so that'll help to keep it clean and things like that, but it'll be a better system. But, I mean, we've had lots of problems with it. And I know before I even started to, there was lots of acts of vandalism or just people swimming and waiting in the fountain itself too. So we just want to make sure that if people do choose to enter the fountain, that they're safe and nothing happens to them and also our fountain as well.
Is there any thought been given to, I noticed there's like two towers as part of the proposal on, like, some type of security camera? I know that probably involves Tom from I T to get it all, but, I mean, for the amount we spend and how much people enjoy it, it'd really be nice to get some cameras on that somehow.
Yes. Included in the memo I wrote too, that was one of the things besides educating the public, we're going to look at adding cameras to Library Square. With the cameras that we did add into our park system, we've had huge success with them. So that will be something we're exploring and that would be one of the first locations we would definitely add to that list, for sure. Great question.
We are very fortunate that when that happened, they didn't get electrocuted. I understand.
Yes, we're very lucky something worse did not happen.
I don't know.
No, I, I mean, that, they're, I mean, the fountain's a big part of Library Square. I know, you know, a lot of people like it, but, I mean.
Well, I think that's the frustrating thing from S A S perspective, because we hear it when it's down. And unfortunately, it's the public that's causing those outages to occur because they, they're not respecting the, I guess, the public aspect of it, the public piece that it is to the community.
It's a beautiful thing. You see people doing wedding pictures. I mean, all kinds of things are on.
Yeah, our goal would be for it to be up and running before prom next year, because that's a big part of Library Square in the spring.
It's not thirty.
Correct.
Most of the work had been completed this fall yet?
So it's thirty to sixty days. Once we get the approval for the pump, we'll let them know to build it. And then everything has to be built around that pump. So if we have a really nice mild fall and start to the winter, we could still get this done. We're just going to be at the mercy of the weather here, but as soon as we can get that pump built, it's kind of, everything else starts to fall into place. That's the biggest piece of it.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the project.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
First reading, reading of ordinance number twenty-four dash eight-five-zero ordinance related to cannabis regulations.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. As Matt has talked about over the last couple of years, the city is progressing to the point where we need to be ready for cannabis retailers coming to town when the state starts issuing their licenses in January. And as Matt has told you several times, the new state law really limits what cities can do as far as regulation of cannabis retailers in town. Basically, all we can do is limit the number of retailers. We can indicate where they can operate in the city. The state requires us to do compliance checks. We can talk about the hours that they can sell their products and we can talk about suspending their registration if they threaten health and safety of the community through their operations. So in preparation for those licenses getting issued in January, as we talked about, we put together an ordinance for you to consider to address those things, those few things that the state is actually allowing us to regulate. And that's contained in the ordinance before you. It's my understanding that there might have been a question regarding the hours that were contained in the ordinance. And I don't know if Matt, if you wanted to talk about that or?
Yeah, first off, one thing, we did recognize that we didn't include something for Sunday. There is a greater limitation on Sunday. You can't start before ten a.m. on sales. Secondly, you know, we, we put something in there to, to match probably what you would consider to be, we just read, our on sale license when it comes to time of day. Really, we have some flexibility as a city to change those times. You know, that's part of the reason you have a first reading is to kind of have a little bit of discussion on that. But with that being said, the state's kind of given us the guidelines on what you can do. The state first law, state law does prohibit the sales between two a.m. and eight a.m. Monday through Saturday and between two a.m. and ten a.m. on Sundays. But state law also gives cities and counties the ability to, to prohibit sales between a period of nine p.m. and two a.m. and eight a.m. and ten a.m. So with that in mind, we've kind of drafted something that would probably be the, the least restrictive. The most restrictive that you could go would be to start sales at ten a.m. and end at eight p.m. would be the most restrictive that you could go as a city. I know we've had some conversations. I know Councilmember May had reached out about some of his thoughts. One thing to propose would be maybe just to match our, our off sale liquor, which is, was it eight a.m. to eight, no, eight a.m. to ten a.m. Monday through Friday, and Sundays, it's eleven to six. So, but I guess, that was, that's part of the discussion for consideration of the first reading of the ordinance today, so.
When I, when I read this, that was actually what I was thinking is I'd rather mimic that.
Sure.
I mean, I, you know, bar sales are open till one o'clock, understand it. But I don't think, even talking to the tobacco stores in town, they don't want to stay open till one o'clock in the morning. My rationale is that, you know, tobacco is not a mind altering thing, but cannabis and the alcohol are. That was my orig, you know, I.
I read that.
Typical reaction, but I mean, that's me. I would like to see the, the eight a.m.'s one, I'm just going to use the liquor store opens, they stop at ten. That's a lot of time in eleven to six. That's just my suggestion to mimic those hours.
I think the one thing to point out that's different with the state law, we can regulate between eight and ten a.m. for cannabis. So at the earliest, we would have to allow them to be open at ten a.m. even on Sundays. And then there is no regulation for holidays too. So the state doesn't, didn't give us. Yeah, which is, it's weird too. And so I think, so the, the latest we could allow them to open would be ten a.m. Monday through Sunday. And the earliest we would, we could restrict them on closing would be eight, eight p.m. Or is it nine a.m.? Nine p.m. So.
Well, Pat, I, I think mimicking the liquor deal is kind of less confusing too, if you piggyback that. And, and it, you know, it's, that's what the hours are for liquor, so.
Little bit of conformity and.
Yeah. Makes it easier to.
We don't, the state may come up with different rulings after this has been in effect for a year.
Very true. Yeah. And I'm anticipating we'll see consistent changes to the state law over the years to come. That's, we're still changing alcohol laws, you know, eighty years after prohibition or whatever, so. So is the consensus from the council then that that, those hours of operation should mimic our, as much as we possibly can mimic our off sale?
Municipal liquors.
Municipal liquor, our liquor sales.
So the question is, will we be amending this, Mark?
There's, there's two.
The ordinance as it's written or would it be?
So I guess, considering this discussion, I guess I would just table this first reading, so we can get the proper hours for you to consider for a new first reading at your next meeting.
And so you'd have a first reading at the next meeting with those updated hours and then a second reading at your first meeting in November, which doesn't really impact us because licenses aren't going to be issued till.
Well, then I would move to table until we get the update, our updated hours into it.
I don't know. Second, Pat. Motion by Tim, second by myself, to table this. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Setting council workshops. Budget workshop, enterprise funds for November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four at four p.m. And work session on draft update downtown plan for November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four at four p.m.
Motion approved.
Okay, I was going to say a pretty self-explanatory.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Pat made the motion.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Oh, I mumbled.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to set those two workshops. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Governance. We have the Hutchinson Library Board Minutes from August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, and Liquor Hutch Quarterly Report. Chief Gibson, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
I have something that you could speak on though. A few residents asked about blighted properties and I guess I, I told them that I think the proper channels are to contact the police and, and I know it takes a long time because one of them took, what, three years, Matt, to get rid of or taken care of. So if you could just talk on the proper channels to go through on that, please.
Certainly. And I may ask for some help from the city attorney on this as well, but, yeah, proper, proper way to report some, well, first I should step back. Generally speaking, our stance on this is more of a reactive approach than a proactive approach. We don't, unfortunately, don't have the resources to dedicate one officer to doing code enforcement and code complaints. We do have someone that's assigned to that, but it's not their only duty. So because of that, our, our approach is more, like I said, reactive than proactive. And so if we start getting complaints from neighbors or, quite frankly, anyone in the community, then we will investigate it. And ultimately, what will happen? If the, if the nuisance or the blight isn't remedied, then we'll normally issue a citation or a summons to appear in court. We've had several of those that we've been working on for quite some time. We always want to try to give the property owner plenty of time to try to clean it up on their own without us having to take that legal action. But at some point, there is times where we do have to take that legal action and then that falls on you all to do that. And in order for the city to, to take action to clean it up, essentially either hiring somebody or bringing in city resources to do that, then that requires council action, if I'm not mistaken. Is that pretty much?
Yeah, you're exactly right. I mean, there's two roads that we commonly take, the chief just described. One is, I'll call the, the criminal route, if you want to put it that way, and violating our nuisance ordinance where the police department, first of all, communicates with the landowner, tries to get voluntary compliance. And if that fails, then they write a report or issue a citation or they have me issue a criminal complaint. And then the other route, obviously, would be an administrative action that would come before the council. We would ask the council to declare the property a nuisance, giving us the power to clean it up and then assess that cleanup to the property owner. Not that one method's better than the other, but it gives us a couple of options to try to use.
And, and I think along with that, it's somewhat, I realize it's frustrating for the citizens or the complaining party. It's also frustrating for us as well. It's not as easy as just issuing a citation or a summons because they can pay the citation, they can pay the citation again and again and again and again. But ultimately, until you all take action, there's no forced compliance.
And I would just, like I said, this is, I think, as long as I've been doing government, this is always a complaint. And I think we, we have to first take a step back and realize the, you know, the Constitution and the right of private property rights and how much, how strong that is and how it makes it difficult for us just to go in and say, okay, you need to clean this out. There was a property in town where it took the city three and a half years to get it cleaned up. And that was, we went through all the steps. They appealed to courts and eventually a judge ruled on it in our favor and that was three and a half years later. So when people say, well, I really don't want to complain upon my neighbor, that actually it's beneficial to us and the sooner you do it, the quicker it is to get it cleaned up. I know, nobody likes to complain, but for us, that's the, the best thing to do because now we have that.
Right, that's what starts it.
Starts the process of this is a nuisance on somebody else. It's never fun, but that's the, that's the best way to do it.
And generally, people are very patient before they get to that breaking point, right? I mean, they, they put up with the nuisance condition until they just can't stand it anymore and then ask for help. I mean, they they put up with the nuisance condition until they just can't stand it anymore and then ask for help.
All right, thanks, Chief.
You bet. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Tom. Since you, yeah, other than that, uh, you introduced your new uh officer, are you up to staff now?
Uh, currently we're short one officer, um and it it doesn't look good for hiring prospects in the near future. Um, statewide, it's. I don't, I think it's appropriate just to share with the council and the public how many applicants we had for our last opening. Sure, so we, last opening, which just closed this past Friday, was open for six weeks. We had a total of zero applicants. Um, metro, first string suburbs, um, I heard we'll have one city in particular that closed their process two weeks ago, one applicant. So it's not just outstate Minnesota, it's everywhere. Um, this is something that's going to be an issue for two to three years minimum. Um, so we doing our best to retain the employee, great employees that we have. And then uh short of recruiting officers from other departments, um, we're probably going to have to wait till spring before we find somebody again, so.
Have we incorporated, I mean, have they incorporated police service or fire service in Tiger Path or with the school?
Yeah, we, it's not a specific part of that. Um, but we have been uh working with the school. Um, the school does have an intro law enforcement class that they they provide. Um, again, if we can recruit somebody from Hutchinson, that's better for us. Um, but they don't always stay either. Um, so it's just, it's a real challenge right now and again, it's not just Hutchinson, it's everywhere. Um, and uh so we'll keep working on it, keep trying to recruit. But I think it's even more important to retain the employees that we have, so. Again, we're going to do what we can for them as well, but.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Lynn, you got anything else for us?
Nothing more.
Not ready. Mike, you got anything for us?
Okay, I'll mention. Evening. Um, our leaf uh pickup started today, so I just wanted to mention that, remind residents of that. Um, first week of six weeks, uh we'll wrap up just again before Thanksgiving this year. But uh just kind of a reminder, this week, of course, the dry weather, uh no frost, a lot of leaves still on the trees, um a lot of work to do, but we're kind of doing a dry run of the route and um we'll kind of ease into it as the season goes. But just kind of a reminder to residents, there's some good information out on Facebook, good information on the website just to refer to, follows the uh trash pickup, you know, for the week with Monday being the catch-up from Friday. So um no real change from years past, but just again, a reminder of uh the program.
Mike, on on the website, does it describe what a wind roll is or?
Yeah, it does have some good illustration of both the uh what to do and what not to do. Um, no grass clippings, um there are some things that tend to show up in there that we prefer not to show up in there. Really try to keep it to leaves as much as possible. Um, so yeah, I would say refer to it and there are some good pictures for reference.
Okay.
The the other big thing too is probably not to be raking your leaves days in advance. Um, really to do it the day before is best, um, um, so that they're not blowing around, scattering around as we get these particularly windy days in in the fall. Um, kind of a courtesy thing, just keep the neighborhood as tidy as possible.
The more you can keep out of storms where, the better.
Yeah, correct.
All right, thanks, Mike. Andy, you got anything else for us?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Mark, you got anything for us?
Nothing else.
All right, thanks. Pat, let's start with you.
Let's see, we haven't had a meeting of any of the boards I'm on. Just enjoy the weather, that's all I can say, take advantage of this stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I had a Parks Board meeting last night at the Episcopal Church and staff has made some really nice improvements over there. The basement is pretty spick and spanned down there, so we thought they'd be having munchens down there before you know it. Um, and the big news, um Lynn was able to get a deal on a playground for Odd Fellows Park behind Speedway. So that'll be a nice improvement, um because that playground is pretty tired right now. Um, otherwise, they're hoping to get on track with the baseball field and uh once that gets going, that'll be good. And that's all we got from Parks Board.
All right, that's it.
That's it.
Jimmy.
Well, first of all, the Minnesota Vehicle Preservation Association came through this past Saturday thanks to our police department for the escort uh to get them in and parks and rec and and they, when they came, they were very complimentary of our community uh and always have been. That's why they put it on their route. Uh, and I look at it as a, as a great thing for our community because what did sixty people, seventy people do? They dined at our restaurants, they went and fueled up at our gas stations, they used our facilities here in town and in many times we can bring in something to help our local economy and our local businesses is is awful special for them. Uh, they love the park and that the city had, you know, a park for them to be in for that night. Uh, so thank you for that. Also on uh the earlier discussion about the library and Mayor, you said it earlier this year, we were at the meetings as councilmen to assist and and to be there to hear. And when we, when I heard there was water coming in the building and we were going to put new flooring in, uh to be able to relay that and get that quick of a turnaround where we can get a, somebody over there to make sure we're not going to put in new flooring and have it wet and and Boeing up a couple of weeks later is is why we go to those meetings, is to be able to relay that information back and and get our staff taking care of it. They do an excellent job, so thank you.
Well, they did have a good turnout for the vehicle parade too, I I heard, so.
They got into town a little early because another community didn't show up when they came in as scheduled. Uh, so they left there a little earlier than I had. Actually, one of their, one of the individuals in their uh party was feeling ill and I think they actually went to our health facility. They wanted to be where there was a health facility that night that would be open, so.
Yeah, it's quite, quite the vehicles.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Jimmy. Dave?
Well, today was the Meeker McClellan County uh Expo out at the fairgrounds. It looked like they had a pretty good crowd there. I think the biggest thing that I noticed was uh uh people that were younger than I am and not many older than I am, but uh you know, we're kind of considered at fifty-five to be senior citizens. So and a lot, a lot of good information was dispensed, so I sometimes I think uh our little younger generation of the uh senior citizens probably can't take the time off to maybe do that, but uh it certainly is interesting to see what they talk about. And one of the big items was today was uh the scamming that's going on and the different types of scamming and and the things and don't get on the phone with somebody and have a long conversation because they're trying to pick up your your voice and that type of thing for uh probably AI and that type of thing, so. Uh, other than that, there was quite a, quite a few people there, there was a lot of vendors and I think they all had information for anybody that's starting out to be a uh senior citizen, so. Uh, MMDC was there trying to maybe recruit uh volunteer drivers, uh trying to, the whole state and the whole country is trying to close the gap on uh uh transportation for people that need it when they need it and that type of thing, so. One of the things I saw was uh which was, I thought was interesting, was a shuttle uh to the airport. I had a lot of people that go down to Florida and or Arizona and or wherever it could be at and they don't like to leave their cars set in the parking lot or have that type of thing going on for months at a time. So that was one of the questions of the middle-of-the-road seniors, but uh yeah, so it was a good day. Uh, had lunch, so can't beat that when you get a free lunch, can you? You didn't have to sign up, so, but other than that, yeah, that's what that was, went on today, so.
And I'm happy you uh mentioned that uh with the artificial intelligence now they're saying that they're be able to copy.
Make your voice.
Your voice or your, you know, grandson's voice or something and that's what they've been doing to scam people. And it's kind of sad that that happens, but glad you brought that up.
Apparently it's a full-time job, so.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Dave. Matt?
I'm just a quick reminder that we will have our next strategic planning session prior to our next council meeting. So that'll be October twenty-second, three forty-five, and then I know, I think most of you have been contacted. There will be a candidate forum October twenty-third at six thirty here in the council chambers too for the public. That's it for me.
School board has a forum Wednesday night as well, so.
Well, all I had was uh Chief Gibson took it for me, so thank you to Chief Gibson. Um, otherwise, I'm with Pat, let's go home and enjoy the weather.
Motion would you second it?
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn.
Be quicker than that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Both say nay. Let's go home.